Whenever you're ready. Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the very first virtual planning board meeting, May 19, 2020. As you know, in response to COVID-19 pandemic, the planning board is conducting this remote meeting this evening pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 related to public meeting. Since the town office is closed to the public, the meetings will be brought here live on Litchfield TV and YouTube channels. And in addition, the public can call to listen to the meeting or provide public testimony during a public comment session. So we will have public input. Public testimony can be submitted to the town office during business hours or sent by email no later than 2:00 PM, Monday, May 18, 2020. You would need to contact Joan McKibben, who is our planning board administrator. If you attempt to access the meeting and are able to do so, we ask that you contact Joan. And we have the information listed there. You can either use email or her phone number and extension. We have some folks joining us by phone this evening. We have some folks joining us by computer. I'm going to forego the normal pledge of allegiance as we usually do at the meetings, since this is a little different this evening. I hope everyone's doing well. I hope everyone's been safe. I know it's been a while since we've met. And I hope that, you know, very soon we will be back in Town Hall at some point. So, but for now, due to the situation as it is, we are basically doing this as a virtual meeting. And it complies with 91A, RSA 91N, in regards to the right to no law. So with that said, I'm going to start with, it doesn't, it looks like we have a quorum this evening. Curtis, you are an alternate, correct?
I am an alternate, yep.
Okay, would you mind being a voting member this evening?
Sure.
Okay, great. So we're going to appoint Curtis to be a voting member. And with that, I'm going to ask the members of the planning board to do a roll call of members present. And I'll start with myself, Michael Frodo, Chair.
Kimberly Queenen, Vice Chair.
Kate Stevens, Member.
James Buffetti, Member.
James Buffetti, Member.
Kevin Lynch, Selectmen's Rap.
Okay. Thank you. The, we have a couple of guests with us this evening. I know Attorney Perman out there somewhere. See on the, on the.
Can you hear me?
Hello, is that you?
Hi, I'm here and hoping you can hear me.
Okay. I know you wanted to speak to the planning board. I figured what I would do is have you come up first and tell us a little bit about the discussion about Mel's Funway.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And everyone, good to see everyone. I wish we were at Town Hall. And thank you for bumping me up to the front of the agenda. I will be brief. When we were approved back in March, the board encouraged us to come back from time to time with an update. So that's what Michael and I are doing right now. Although Michael's name appears to be Karen on the, on his title. This is the board. You know me, Andy Perman. On behalf of Mel's Funway Park. With me tonight is Michael Akamando. Wayne Caulfield could not be here. I want to give you a brief update of where we are. And I'm going to tell you that we're going to be coming back to you for hopefully a June meeting to modify a portion of the plan that was approved back in March. The quick update is all but two of the improvements that we had approved back in March will be completed by July 31st. That's a little slower than we were anticipating. You can imagine, we've had an unexpected pandemic. And Mel's did not plan the pandemic. They had nothing to do with it. But we're up against the pandemic. But all but two of our improvements will be done by midsummer. And I'll tell you about those two. In the coming weeks, the town will see, excuse me, Mel's coming back to life a little bit. Friday, Saturday, Sundays, plus this Memorial Day, we will be opening just portions of the park. Mini golf will be, we've got the green light from the governor. Banning cages, ice cream will be open Friday, Saturday, Sundays. Plus, again, this Memorial Day. We will not have a restaurant open probably this entire season. We will not have the Laserplex open until we get the green light from the governor's office. The arcade, the indoor arcade will not be open. Go karts are a maybe. We have to play that by ear as the governor's office loosens up the stay-at-home orders. The application that you're going to see come to you very shortly is to make two minor modifications to what was approved on a temporary basis. The, we got approved on March 3rd. Two weeks later, the whole world shuts down due to the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result, because amusement parks were not an essential business, we were not able to bring on a crew and start working on the carnage, which was the plan. That was that was going to take the most time. And that was the plan to start right off the bat with removing the carnage haunt. We are not able to do that. We're still not able to do that today because we can't get a crew together until amusement parks are okay to open up. That's not to say that other construction pieces, construction crews have been considered essential. So for example, if you've driven by the park, you'll see that the bumper boat facility is almost done. The pads for the kitty Mel's have been installed. And other work has been going on. The mini golf concrete crew is there today. So other work has been going on by outside contractors. But Mel's has not been able to hire anyone to tackle the, tackle the, the carnage haunt. The, so part of our application that's going to come to is going to talk about the carnage haunt. I'll talk about that in a sec. The other piece that has not been completed or will not be completed with our deadlines that we had approved is Pavilion Number Two. You remember that we will be installing the horizontal siding on the pavilions to satisfy our neighbor. And that will be completed for building number one in the next three to four weeks. And that will be completed in the next three to four weeks on two of the four sides of Pavilion Number Two. The southern and western sides of Pavilion Number Two are open. And they're open because they were the bar and merchandise area for the past few years during the haunt season, the Halloween season. And in addition to the inability to hire crews to work the carnage removal, there's also been a phenomenon affecting all the haunts across the country in that no manufacturers are making any of the materials or things that you need to put on a haunt. For example, there are three main Halloween conventions that happen every year. There's the IAPP convention in Orlando. That's the big one. There's one in St. Louis. And there's the Midwest Haunt Convention in Chicago. They've all been canceled this year. And that's where all the haunts across the country, that's where they put their orders in for new haunts going into the, going into the Halloween season. Those have all been canceled. As a result, there's been no manufacturers preparing any of the mechanisms or props or bodies or blood and other goo for the, for the Halloween haunt. As a result, we've not been able to install a new haunt into Pavilion Number Two. Remember, the plan was to remove carnage and replace that haunt with a new haunt in Pavilion Number Two. We've not been able to do that. So what you're going to see in a very brief application coming to you in the next week or two, and again, my goal is to hopefully be on for the board's second meeting in June, is to modify the carnage deadline. I forget what it was exactly, but it was sometime, I think, September 30th. It was going to be removed, it's going to be removed. Whatever the deadline was, we're asking for a temporary stay of execution until December 31st for both carnage and the improvements to the remainder of Pavilion Number Two. And when that application gets in, when I get before you, we'll go through a full explanation and presentation. But that's the, that's the brief update I have for the board. Many of you may be thinking that, have you talked to Attorney Hollis or Mr. Charbonneau? I have not. I am going to tomorrow morning. You folks are my first stop, just to let you know where we are. So I will be talking to both Morgan and Rick this week. I'll be reaching out to them tomorrow morning, hopefully connecting this week. So that's my brief update, Mr. Chairman. Michael, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Michael, did you have anything to add?
No, I think you hit that right on the head. It's been very difficult, obviously, not for most companies around the world. And we've come to pretty much a standstill with most of everything that we can accomplish right now in the park. And it was to our surprise last night to even have the governor say we could open up mini golf now with batting cages. So we're hoping to have an up through. Our crew this weekend will be Wayne, myself, our managers, our maintenance team. And we're hoping to be able to get a couple of other employees to get this weekend through also. So we're working very hard to do everything we can and continue to do the improvements as fast as we can.
And Mr. Chairman, that's, that's our update for the board. We'd be happy to answer any questions. We'll be back to you very shortly.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update. So my understanding, and from the last time you were in, I think what we did was we put the deadline for completion to August 31st. I think we're going to have a September 1st compliance hearing. And the fact that, you know, COVID-19 and all that stuff, I certainly understand the bill. There's a lot, been a lot of changes and so forth. But, you know, I think, you know, certainly, you know, it may, maybe it might require an extension at some point if you do come in in the second meeting in June. You know, it was an idea of, you know, if it is December 31st, maybe we can pinpoint a date. But for now, I'll, I'll leave that on hold because I don't have anything in front of me in terms of modified plan. So does the board have any questions for Mr. Attorney Perman or his client? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Perman, for coming in. And I'll be see you maybe in June at some point.
Okay, thank you all. Again, thanks very much for having us first. Keith, thank you for your patience and stay safe, everyone.
You do the same. Thank you.
Take care.
Into the, the two applications, I just want to basically do a public input on non-agenda items. If there's any members of the public that are on this call or listening in, or if they have anything on non-agenda items, items not on the agenda, I'm going to open it up to public input on non-agenda items at this point. And John, you can let me know if there's anybody on.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't see any, anybody else but the members. And Keith.
Okay. So there being seems none, no public present there. We will close the public input on non-agenda items. We do have our first application this evening. Kevin Lynch, who is our ex officio member, is actually a lot line, well, his lot line adjustment. So he's going to, he has informed me that he's going to recuse himself for this portion of the meeting. So Kevin, we, you know, basically, before the record, we're accusing you due to the, any potential conflict. With that said, begin the meeting. Okay. The first item on the agenda this evening is an application from Ann P. Lynch, 336 Charles Bancroft Highway, map 15 lot 20, and Greta A. Lynch, 338 Charles Bancroft Highway, map 15 lot 19. Lot line adjustment between the two lots. Is the applicant present?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Can the applicant introduce himself?
Kevin Lynch. I'm representing my mother, who lives at 338 Charles Bancroft Highway, and also my sister, who lives at 336 Charles Bancroft Highway. All you know is where the golf ball's been sold for years. Okay. We are, we went to the ZBA to get a zoning to reduce, to add more land to the front of her house, Ann's house, I'm going to say. The present lot that she has only has 45 feet of frontage on Route 3A. You know, we went to 85 feet and got the variance for that to give her more land. She would like to construct a garage and once all, a half garage somewhere there to meet the setbacks. We also know that the land size that she has is only 9,000 square feet. That was done in 1922, '24, back in the days. It's been owned by the same fam, family since. My mother is here. She grew up in the house next door in the house that Ann's in. She lived there for many, many years too. So I, all we had to do is, you know, get a lot line adjustment, adding more frontage so we can do it. We added more landmass to it. We brought it to an acre so we can fall with the zoning in that, in that area. It's all fields, mostly at the angle you see there with the angle in the lot line. Listen to the field style, it's all plowed ground. That's not going to change. Nothing going to change there, stuff like the frontage and the lot line. That's it. Everything else is going to stay the same. And I submitted all this stuff today to Joan, like Jay. I got him, he sent me something on Friday afternoon. I talked to my surveyor, who are doing the work. We put it all done because he did not work this weekend. So Monday, he worked on it. And today I got, I've got it. And we put it all together and gave it to Joan. There are three waivers that I'm requesting. I can't recall what you're on right now. Jay knows that for sure. And I hope you've seen the paperwork. I can't remember the other thing. I think that's it. I think I got it all, just the waivers. Okay, because it's unconventional. And we're not adding more land to it from the old farm set. That's all we're doing. The zone, the zone, the zoning board has agreed to it so far. And there's no other changes. Leach Fields are brand new of both of them. There's going to be an easement for the well. There's one well that feeds both those homes. That document is all set to be recorded as well. And also, in the future, I understand Panachuk is going to be giving of some of their fine quality water in the future. And we're not sure what we're going to do when that comes back and our well is good. Okay, with PF away, so that's not a concern. But in the future, they may tie, she, my sister, who's here, may tie on the town one water. Now we'll change that. But that's about it. It's a very simple lot line adjustment. I'm adding an acre to 9,000 square feet. Give it another 40 feet of road frontage so that we can meet the setbacks.
Okay. Okay. What I wanted to first, first, is do a, determine whether there is an application for completeness as we normally do in these. This is actually a subdivision. So this falls under the subdivision regs. And I believe it's 320.06, where it's minus subdivisions, lot line adjustments. So what I want to do is, we'll do this as we normally do. We'll do an applicant, determine application for completeness from staff. In order to do that, we need to know that all the proper documentation has been submitted, any fees paid, and any, that all proper plans and so forth have been submitted for this, for this subdivision. So I will turn it over to Joan, Joan, and I'll ask Joan and Jay, have we, do we have all of the documentation we need to do an application for completeness?
Yes, the butters have been notified and fees have been paid. And I sent all the paperwork to Jay today.
Okay. And this is Jay, I would concur. Okay. So all the butters have been notified. Any and all fees have been paid and all documentation has been submitted. So what I'm going to do is, for this meeting, we're going to do a roll call vote. I would entertain a motion from the board to approve this application for completeness. Is there a motion? This isn't approval of the plan. The all documentation has been submitted. The required documentation, all the butters have been notified.
I'll make a motion to accept the application.
Kate has made a motion to accept the application for completeness. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second. Kim?
Kim is doing a second. Okay. I'm going to do a roll call of members. All those members who determine that there's an application for completeness to be signified by roll call. Aye. Mike Frodo, Chair, aye.
Kim Queenen, Vice Chair, aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
James Buffetti, aye.
Curtis Sampson, Alternate, aye.
All right. Having, we have five votes unanimous. It's a light. Any opposed, abstained? The roll call vote is 5-0-0. And the application for completeness is accepted. Okay. You heard Mr. Lynch provide a little bit of background information concerning this lot line adjustment. Does, before I go any further, does the board have any questions for the applicant that they would like to ask at this time? I have one question, Kevin. You, there are no outstanding mortgages or encumbrances on this property, correct? On the properties?
The properties. That's correct. And that is that no notices in the stuff that I dropped off today.
Neither houses.
Neither house. They've been owned for years.
And I do have that letter from Greta A. Lynch dated May 18, 2020, that owners of lot 20 and 19, Litchfield, New Hampshire, do hereby state that there are no mortgages or other encumbrances except as noted. There exists a well and waterline agreement or easement. There's no issue with that, I would assume.
There's no issues.
The document has been notarized, I think. So that the, the deed, have all the deeds submitted and notarized? Am I understanding?
Yes, this is Jay.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Lynch? We do have some waivers that were submitted. There is also a well and waterline agreement or easement that was also submitted. Nobody has any questions on that. We'll go to the waivers on the subdivision regulations. These waivers have to deal with oil types with, I believe you, wetland, denoting wetlands and dry land and erosion and sediment control plans. This would be under the subdivision regulations. Those numbers, 530, G, E, and C, M. It looks like the zoning board took action on this, granted back in 2014, subject to ZBA action and granted all of them. Is there any pending zoning case? Not good, Kevin, I should ask that question.
No, there isn't.
Okay.
No, there isn't.
Okay. So what I want to do is, maybe you can take us through each of the waivers and explain the reason for why you're seeking the waiver. And explain to us how this would be not applicable to this subdivision plan. So why don't I, why don't you do that?
Okay. So not doing any disturbance to the soils. All we're doing is adding more land. Everything you see is going to be the same. The only thing, there'd be a small construction adjacent to the house. No different than any others. It's flat land. There's no wetlands, no wetland soil. Okay, it's just, it's farmland, the most of it, and up there the road. It's all sand. So that's why we didn't, road control, because there's no construction for a road. I think we're just adding land. Jay, help me on this because I don't have them in front, in front of me.
Yeah, I, I would just agree with your statements. This plan proposes no new development. We have two existing single-family homes. The only thing that's happening is that one of the lots is becoming larger. So we would show that they, waiver requests are reasonable.
And I assume there's no regional impact to the project?
No regional.
I forget. Does anybody have any questions about these waivers, Kevin? All right. Can someone speak? Okay. So hearing none, what I'm going to do is, since we have the waivers with us, I think what we can do is vote on the waivers first, if that's okay with the board, if the board wishes, and then go to a approval of the application if we show desire. wishes, and then go to a approval of the application, if we show desire. So in terms of the waivers for the subdivision regs, under 530G, 530D, and 530M, under the subdivision regulations, we would entertain a motion to accept or approve those waivers at this time.
So moved. This is Kate.
Kate, okay. So Kate makes the motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
Kim will second.
Kim seconds. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, I will do a roll call vote. All those who signify approval of the waivers signify by saying for 530G, M, and D signify by saying aye, and roll call vote. Michael Frodo, aye.
Kimberly Queenen, aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
James Buffetti, aye.
Curtis Sampson, aye.
No opposed or abstained? It's like the motion is going to pass 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay. In terms of the approval, Jay, just before I, actually before I even go there, I should open it up to public input. Is there any members of the public who are on, online, out there, who wish to comment, make comments, have questions for the applicant? Is there anybody, John?
Mr. Chair, there are no public members.
No public members, no input, okay. So I'm going to close public input on this project. Jay, do you have any other concerns or issues that we didn't cover?
I do not. I think you saw on the staff memo, we had noted that the waiver requests were required, those have been submitted. The statement on encumbrances was noted, those have been submitted. And we understand today, a plan was submitted. We had some minor comments on the plan itself, the plan itself, and my understanding is those.
Okay, thank you. If nobody has anything else, then I think we're going to move to approval. We have a recommendation to accept, to approve the application. So I'll entertain a motion at this time, if there's no other questions or concerns, to approve the application.
I have a question. This is Kim, I have a question. The staff technical comments, are we all set with those? About the note 11 should be amended, from Jay? It said the title block needed to be changed to read approved by the Litchfield Planning Board, rather than the Litchfield Zoning Board. Was that all done?
Yes, I have new plans and Plan 11, I mean Note 11 zoning case granted. The approval blocks are there, and...
And changing one of the names? Maybe to Greta?
Yes.
That was also done?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that part wasn't skipped.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the application as amended to those changes that were just mentioned, the title block, the change of the name, and the note concerning the zoning. For an application from Ann P. Lynch at 336 Ralsbank Rock Highway, map Lot 20, and Greta A. Lynch, 338 Ralsbank Rock Highway, map 15 Lot 19, for a lot line adjustment between two lots mentioned. So I'll entertain a motion from the board if they so wish to approve the application as amended to.
So moved. This is Kate.
Kate made a motion, do I have a second to the motion?
Second, it's Jim Buffetti.
Jim.
Thank you, James. I have a second. Do I have discussion? Discussion? Okay. None? We'll vote. All those in favor of the approval signify by saying aye in roll call. Mike Frodo, aye.
Kimberly Queenen, aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
James Buffetti, aye.
Curtis Sampson, aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. The motion passes 5-0-0. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you very much, too, as well.
The next item on the agenda for this evening is number 2, Romano's Pizza, 27 Colby Road, map 21 Lot 23, to add seven parking spaces to the north side of the building. Is the applicant present this evening?
Yes, I'm here. This is William Vessel.
Hi. So if you'd introduce yourself and your address profession.
Sure. My name is William Vessels. I am the owner and operator of Romano's Pizza in Litchfield, address of 27 Colby Road. Tonight, what I'm proposing is to add an employee-only parking area on the north side of the property, off of Morgan Road. It would basically come onto the grassy area, as it is now, towards the building from Morgan, about 30 feet, and it would extend, it would be about 63 feet wide, which would permit about seven parking spots. I talked to the engineer that looked at the plans. He said that he didn't believe drainage would be an issue. There's grassy swale in between the parking area and the building that would take care of any runoff, and he didn't have any concerns as far as that goes. So I don't know if anyone on the board has any additional concerns.
Before we get into that, what I need to do, since this is a site plan, obviously, and we're dealing with parking, we do need to accept the application for completeness. So we're going to start by doing that. I will ask Jay and Joan, have all the butters to the property been notified? All fees paid? All the required documentation submitted to the town?
Yes, the butters were notified and fees have been paid.
And this is Jay, I concur.
Okay. Very good. So this is a motion to accept the application. It is not a, it's not a motion to approve the application, it's only moving to accept the initial application as it has been presented to staff. So at this time, I will entertain, having heard that everything has been, we have butters noticed, we have fees paid, we have documentation that is required, I'll entertain a motion to accept the application at this time.
So moved. It's Jim.
Okay. So James has made a motion to accept the application, do I have a second to that motion?
Second, Curtis Sampson.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion? All right. Roll call. All those in favor of accepting the application for completeness as done, please signify by saying aye. Michael Frodo, aye.
Kimberly Queenen, aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
James Buffetti, aye.
Curtis Sampson, aye.
Kevin Lynch, aye. I'm back on.
Oh, yes, thank you. Welcome back.
It's aye, Mike.
No oppositions, no abstains. The motion passes 6-0-0. Okay. So that's the application for completeness. You gave it, Mr. Vessel, you gave us a little bit of information about what you're proposing for the site plan. And I'll open it up to the board. Does the board have any questions of the applicant? This has to do with parking, so we'll open the discussion.
Kim does?
Okay.
It looks like it meets all the dimensional requirements and setbacks, so that's good. I'm just questioning the maximum impervious surface. It's either 65% or 75%, depending on the, which kind of land it falls into. I'm looking at the drawing that's on the screen here. Does it, because they're going to, I'm sorry about the background noise. It includes any buildings or parking. I just want to make sure we're not going over the 65% or 75%. Looking at that drawing.
At this, I'm sorry, at this time I wasn't planning on actually paving, which I think would have it maintain being an impervious surface.
I think one of them said gravel, I'm just not sure what line it was. I thought it was like, it's either section 603, 802, or 952, depending on the land But I'm looking at this lot, I don't know how much of this is used up, or you have extra land around the building or not. I don't know where it ends. Can we just tell by looking at it? Oops.
I'm sorry, there is a fair amount of empty land.
Jay, do you understand what I'm asking, that you're looking at, if it's 65% or 75%?
I do. Typically, we don't consider unpaved to be a pervious surface, but if you look at the overall lot, there's really a lot of, you know, the overall lot is quite large, so I don't see, you know, this area is...
I just wanted to make sure on a visual, you know, just looking at it, it would pass. All right. I just didn't tell by the drawing where it was, you know? It was a small drawing. Talked about drainage already, is that what you're saying?
And I assume this is not located within 50 feet of any public right-of-way? This is a private, is this a private road, correct? Is my understanding? Is this a but a private road?
That's correct, it's on a private road, yes.
Okay.
So if it's on a private road, does that mean, normally we wouldn't want such a wide curb cut. I know that we've mentioned that before. I believe it was the site plan for the storage units further south. And where is it? Section 120.1.5, there's an image that says, it says right above it, it eliminates the unrestricted access to the lot frontage, which is a safety hazard, as illustrated below. So wouldn't a waiver or something be needed for that, or is that different because it's a private road?
This is Jay, it is different because this is a private road. Otherwise, we would have, we would have certainly had a concern.
Okay. So same with like the distance from the corner and all of those things? Okay.
Anybody have any other questions? I just wanted to ask about the, excuse me. You said there was no drainage concerns, property?
How is the lighting on that side of the building? Do you plan to improve that, or does it need improvement for people walking from that side of the building?
There are two security lights on that building. I think it's sufficient. We actually, we, I'm sorry, we have more than two. We have three that are actually on the building, then we have an additional one that doesn't shine off the property, it shines on the edge of the property, which would actually shine right on this proposed parking area.
Okay, great.
Hi, this is Curtis. Looking at this plot line, plot map right here, I see it says existing building, and it says proposed building. The entrance from this parking lot, do they have to walk around the building, down that little, I think, hill that's on the backside there? Is there going to be a walking path right across the front? I'm not too familiar with that side of the property, I've seen the parking lot side, but what's the entrance weight?
I don't know if you, if you notice on the plan, there's a handicap, I'm sorry, a handicap ramp is referenced on that side. It actually, there is a door on that side. It ended up a little bit more on the north side of the building, as opposed to the, that back corner. So it actually, it would actually be very easy to access that door for employees, the handicap access.
I think we should see a, maybe like a proposed walkway, something laid out so that the pedestrian traffic is, you know, planned out for the employees. And actually, same with the lighting on the outside, shouldn't the lighting be shown on the plan?
And the other question, you just, you just referenced that it'd be an entrance for the employees. Is this, maybe I missed it, is this strictly employee parking up top there, or is this for public access?
No, it was strictly employee parking.
Is there any plans for landscaping or anything of that nature, to screen any adjacent muscles or anything like that? Just curious.
I was planning on putting like one of the, like a two-rail fence to line it, to differentiate the parking area from the grassy area, but that's really the only plan, was probably a break in the middle that would line up with the door, so there's a walkway. It's, the parking area would be relatively close to that door, it would probably only be 15 or so feet from that door, maybe a little bit more, but 15 to 20 feet.
Is that noted on the plan, or is there a landscaping document that goes with it, or have you not done that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Dude, has this been noted on the plan? Has the rail fence you're talking about and the grassy area, have you noted it on the plan?
I don't believe, well, it's currently a grassy area, the entire area is a grassy area, but no, the fence is not, is not on there. I just thought it would be a way to neaten up and differentiate the grassy area from the parking area.
The reason I ask is, if you are going to do that, I mean, I would recommend probably at least showing where the rail fence is going to be ran, and, you know, aesthetic.
I think that's, I think we do need that, and proposed walk, where you're proposing employees walk from the lot to the building, and the lighting on the outside of the building. We would normally see those on site plans.
Is there a large, is there a large grade from that new parking lot suggested area down to the building? I thought that side of the building, the property line, was much more elevated than the lower parking lots. What's that like, and what are you going to do with ice and runoff and hazards that are going to come over there?
I don't think it's much, it's slightly more elevated, but I don't think the grading is, it's not a great deal different from Morgan Road to where the building is. It does continue to slope as the property continues, but I think it gets a little bit more steep around like the building area to the parking lot, but that area is relatively flat.
I have a question, this is Kim.
Yeah?
Is it okay if I ask a question? This is Kim.
Yep. It's fine. Go ahead, Kim.
Oh. Can we, Colby... Can we, Colby Road, if you go in through the arrow, the parking, you know, I mean, the, yeah, we usually enter the restaurant road.
Yes.
Scroll it up a little bit. All right, so I know when you go in, you can go two different directions. I can see the arrows are doing that, right? How are you getting in over there? Are you actually getting in over a private road? Okay, because we, emergency vehicles need to get in there, right? Can I get in there today? I see an arrow kind of by itself from the building going out. You know where the building is? You see one arrow going to the right towards the private road. How does an emergency vehicle get in there today if it had to?
As far as, are you questioning if there's enough room for them to get through?
Yeah, they're supposed to be at least 10, well, I guess they have to be, they have to be able to get to 10 feet away from the building anywhere there's humans, you know, occupying the building. I guess if there was a problem there today, how would a fire truck or ambulance get into that part of where you were proposing to put the employee parking?
I, I'm a little confused. That arrow wouldn't, wouldn't be changed, and the width of the driveway at that point wouldn't be changed at all.
Is that, is that a driveway where that arrow is pointing out?
Yes.
Okay, so today you're saying the trucks could get in that way to get to that part of the property?
Yes.
Kim, Mr. Chair, can I add to this? This is Kevin Lynch.
Sure.
Just so that you know, the, when they put the ditch on, which I was not here, but the door was relocated to the, I'm gonna say, the north side of the building, towards the private way. That walkway goes a little bit closer to the the gas tanks, but goes right up to a stairs stairway or ramp that goes into the building right there. It's not that high off the ground. I've been there. It's only about 18 inches to 24 at the most, because that's the high part there. Okay? And parking that they're talking about is about 25 feet away. So there will have to be a walkway there. That's what Keith is saying. But as for the road going around it, there's always the existing road that goes around the building all the way around, and it's one-way. On the backside, as you're going, you notice the traffic is one-way there. It goes like that all the way around. Okay? Just to give you an idea of what's there. You're on the high side of that lot, and that's where the doctor dentist's office used to be. I suffer the look. Okay? Just to give it a taste.
Before I open it up, unless anybody has any questions. If you do, you can jump in, but before I open it up to public input, I just wanted to, I believe, is Luke Karen still on? Engineer?
Yes, yes, I am.
I figured I'd get your input first on this project. Do you have anything you would like to add?
I think you need to be real specific as to what's being approved, because it looks like from an original plan, where you're seeing the word proposed lights, proposed hedges, proposed a lot of things, which have actually been constructed.
Okay.
So just be real specific as to what you're approving, so it doesn't mix up with other stuff that's been built and existing for quite a while.
Jay, do you have anything before I open up to public input?
Nothing more to add, no.
All right. So at this time, I will open the meeting up to input, and if there's any members of the public who are listening in to this meeting. John, you can let me know.
Mr. Chair, there are no members of the public.
No butters or anything?
Not that I see.
Thank you. I will bring it back to the board. Do you want to have any further questions for the applicant? One quick question, and I should have asked this at the beginning. I assume there, there is no regional impact to this project?
I don't believe so, no.
So I mean, it sounds as though, I mean, we're really addressing the parking piece here. This is a site plan that is being modified, if you will, from one that has already been submitted, which was approved, I believe, in 2005. So I think as Mr. Karen said, we should be a little bit specific in terms of what we are approving, which deals with the parking issue, so I would, you know, focus on that. Public road. So we can, we can conditionally approve it. Jay, do you have any recommendations for conditional approval? Just curious.
Based on the conversation of the board, I think if the board were to wish to conditionally approve it, they'd be approving a modification to the approved site plan to show the addition of seven unpaid spaces subject to modification of the plan to show addition of a split rail, the post-split rail fence, a walkway connecting the employee parking area to the handicapped entrance of the building, and the lighting on the side of the building. It should be indicated.
Does the board have anything else they would like to add to that? Have any questions or concerns as to conditional approval? If we do decide to approve it?
And just as Lou had said, to clean up the, you know, proposed building, that kind of verbiage.
Sorry, what did you say, Kate? The proposed building?
Yeah, this is Kate. Just, just in addition to what Jay said, as Lou mentioned, to clean up the verbiage that says things like proposed lighting, proposed buildings, that sort of thing.
I see. Thank you.
Kevin Lynch, I think Jay's right. Just come in with a shop joint or a plan showing the walkway and existing light, the lighting, because this plan was overimposed on a previous approved plan. And what Lou was saying, you're seeing all the stuff that was installed prior to. It's there, but it's just, it's a little, it's a parking lot, it's minor. And it's supposed to be impervious, correct?
Is that correct, the applicant?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct.
That's important, okay. That's all. It's a simple one.
Okay. Mr. Karen, any other recommendations?
Well, the only thing I can't see, I believe there's a water line that was installed off of Morgan Drive towards the building. I'm not sure it was ever connected to the building, but I can't see it because of things that are on the screen. When Penachuk came in two years ago, they put in a main along Morgan, and I believe they did a lateral towards the restaurant. But I'm not sure it ever got connected to the restaurant. But I can't see it on the plan because there's a block that lists the participants in the way.
Keith, the question is, are you tied into town water?
I am not, but there is a place to tie in that is on that side.
So there is a stub that they brought to the property line?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what you're referring to, Lou, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah. It's not in yet, but I believe it's in the right-of-way of Col Kobe Way. And PS, Penachuk knows where it is, because that's what the chocolate factory is. You go to drain it.
So you, so my understanding is you are going to tie into the public, public water?
No, not at this time, no.
Not at this time, okay.
No.
Just be a good idea to show it on the plan.
Okay.
All right. Anything else from the applicant?
Uh, no, not at this time, no.
Okay. From the board. Is the board willing to do a conditional approval of this modified site plan? Romano's? I'll entertain a motion for conditional approval based on the conditional modification of the site plan for the seven unpaid parking spaces. The indication of the split rail fence on the plan. The walkway, handicap access, and lighting. And the, also noted on the plan, this should be noted on the plan, the where the tie-in to Colby Road, where the town water to reflect that on the plan as well. Is there anything else that the board would like to see as a condition of approval? I mean, I went through some of them.
This is Curtis Hampton. In the current plot plan, it shows the current employee spaces listed. If this is gonna be new employee parking, do we want to see that that's also labeled on the plan as employee spaces?
I think we should, yes. What does the other members of the board feel?
I personally don't feel it's a necessary thing to know, because your employees may change the amount of, you got some down there now that park in the regular parking lot at times, too. And it still works out. Just extra parking. I think mainly it's for Keith's employee employees. I understand that. But to me, you get handicapped, you can maybe use a couple spots over there as well. Because the ramp is gonna be real, real close, you know?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, was if it's, if it's employee parking lot, are there different rules and regulations that we have to abide by versus customer parking and spacing and access? So that's why I was asking. If that's gonna be public parking, are there different requirements that we have to look into?
I can, uh, Jay, and...
Not, not in the regulations, no?
No. They're all the same.
Because I noticed under the site plans, where it talks about parking spaces, I think it's T restaurant standard, one space for patron seats, or one space for 100 square feet of gross floor area, whichever is greater, plus one space for employees in the larger So that's the minimum standard for the provision of parking spaces.
And that's, and in your site plan, right, it specifies what they're gonna use for site plan space. The size. That's typical.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, like I said, I don't think it, there's any harm of putting something on the plan. You could, you know, subject to change or whatever, but if it's just noted on the, you know, that's just for extension purposes. Do it. Anyway. Um. Kim, do you have anything? I know usually you have.
I think on your list, you just had to...
Negative way.
Oh, that's okay. I think in your list, you wanted to also include conditionally the lighting on the side of the building.
And you're also with the emergency access issue?
Yeah, I think they meet the footage requirement.
Okay. So those would be the conditions of approval. I would, I mean, if there's nothing else, losing my voice. If there's nothing from the board have any questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion to conditionally approve the modification of the approved site plan for Romano's Pizza 27 Colby Road.
This is Kate. I'll make the motion.
Okay, Kate is gonna make the motion.
Conditionally approved, yeah.
As conditionally approved, as we have discussed this evening. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a second. Um, do I have any further discussion? All right, we'll do roll call, vote for conditional approval. All those in favor signify by saying, Michael, aye.
Kimberly Quinn, an aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
James Buffetti, aye.
Kevin Lynch, aye.
Curtis Hampton, aye.
Proposed abstaining motion will pass 6-0-0. All right. I think we're all set. Thank you very much, Mr. Chris coming in, and best of luck.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you. It was a pleasure, pleasure taking part in the first virtual meeting, so.
Okay, great.
We made history tonight.
I was double.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. The next item on the agenda, and actually, this is, I believe, John Brunel. This is public information. Two communication tower slash antenna locations controlled by the town of Litchfield. One at 255 Charles Bancroft Highway and number two at Darrell Pond Parking Lot. This is actually not necessarily a planning board approval. This is actually input that the town would welcome from the planning board as to this project. This is really a town project. It's really under the selectmen, but I'll let John explain a little bit about it, and John, if you're on, we'll
I am. Thank you. Thanks for the board giving me the time tonight, and as the chairman said, this is more informational, but also to advise you how we're addressing the project and some of the changes that have been going on, so for your benefit, but also the public that may be listening. This is a little bit of a history. We went in front of the voters in March to fund the system. The system that we have today is roughly 22-plus years old. It's made up of three disparate, different systems. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the manufacturing alone supports the gear that we have, so that puts applications at risk both for the fire department and police department, and then additionally, BPW. Additionally, we also have coverage issues. The town has grown, and buildings have grown, and construction's changed, and the RF patents have changed, so we have areas that we have poor coverage where officers or fire department members can't communicate successfully to their dispatch or fellow members. We started this process a couple years ago. It went from about a $1.6 million project all the way down to where we are today, about $700,000. Again, the goals were to combine the systems, single system, that met everybody's needs, which took us, why it took us four years to get there, to basically address most of the coverage issues that we had, and to pick sites that would make that, you know, make a better coverage that we don't have today, and then design that system to hopefully last for 20-plus years, but technology is what technology is. Today, the site is based on four sites, or it's a four-system site. The primary site is going to be located at Colonial Drive, so Colonial Drive is where the water tower is for Penachuk. So that's where the primary site will be. The second site will to be in the... Uh, the second site, which would be in the, the north end of town, is at Morgan, that's an existing site that we have today that's on the Verizon Tower, it's right behind the nine-hole golf course. And then we have, um, the Old Town Hall, which is our west site, and then we have Royal, um, Memorial Park, um, the parking lot, and I'll, we'll explain those two sites, so the two additional sites to the system today will be at Royal Memorial, Talon Hall, and the Old Town Hall. And that's the purpose for the, purpose for this discussion. The north sites, the north and south, it's gonna improve coverage, it's also giving us some coverage in the schools. Presentations in the past, one of our challenges is that communications with inside the schools for any first responder that's already on existing. So, um, this system was designed to try to deal with that. So, um, the primary site, as I said, is the Colonial Drive Water Tank, um, it's on Penachuck. And, uh, initially in the plans, it was to be a, uh, a structure that was a trash store on top of the, the tank. Like breaking news, that may not be, be able to occur, so we'll be looking at constructing a little, uh, a tower structure next, next to that, next to that tank on their property. They'll follow on that. But that is our primary site, that's where everything will be linked to, and that's where everything is going through, so, uh, it's a critical site for our system. Uh, the north side, like I said, it's at Morgan, it's at the Verizon Tower, again, it's right behind the nine, the nine-hole golf course, uh, today we already have a presence there, uh, so we're not really changing anything but adding some functionality there. The first new site, and one of the reasons for why we're coming forward to the board today was just to share with you our plans, and we've, we've already had approval from the rec commission, and obviously the town owns the property, so we're, we're all in agreement. We're gonna position a 100-foot tower. Approximately, we got a little red dot, red squares in that picture, and that's basically, um, the north end of the parking lot, if you've familiar with parking lot, there's a, there's a softball pitching net right adjacent to that. It's actually nestled nicely into the trees, it gives us enough clearance, but it also kinda masks the rest of the road and you won't see it. And I'll show you an example of that tower, cause someone, uh, concerned what it looks like. The location is in our old, is in the Old Town Hall. Um, we need some coverage in that area, so we wanted to construct a, a receiver site and transmitter site there for school coverage and better, uh, 3A coverage up and down. So that is being proposed and put beside the cable TV, uh, building. We're positioning it there for a couple of reasons, one, we could put it against the Old Town Hall, I mean, the old, um, fire station, but, you know, the, 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 I, the longevity of that building is still not decided, obviously. And then also putting it closer to, um, the Old Town Hall would be possible, but there is the new septic system in there and a bunch of different factors that we decided to move it closer to the, um, to the storage shed where we have room to put some of our gear. And finally, um, for those of the folks who are interested in what a 100-foot tower looks like, that is a recent installation over in Salem. The same 100-foot tower with just a different angle, as you can see, it's not very inclusive, it's tall. Um, it goes out to the top and it somewhat kind of buries into the scene once it's there.
The door just opened up.
See, I'll take any questions from any board members or any, anybody, if there's anybody.
I'll be right back.
Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brunel?
Uh, so did anyone at, on the rec commission ask if they can use the tower for the Christmas tree lighting?
No, no one did, but it's not in a, it's not in a very good location for that.
But I think just in line with, uh, you know, the, um, master plan, keeping it as well hidden and, you know, in line with the landscape as we possibly can with a 100-foot tower, I think is really the only concern that probably, at least I would have as a member of the public.
Yeah.
But I know you're doing your best, so.
Yeah, we are doing our best, um, when we looked at that site, there are obviously a couple of different locations we could put it. If we put it close to the Talon Hall, uh, Talon Road, obviously the residents in town would actually see it, because the tree cover's there, but they're right there, they'll see it.
Oh, not even just specific to that site, I just, I mean, in general.
Oh, yeah.
For all the towers, yeah.
Yeah. Now, we, right now, we're only proposing, we only had proposal of two towers. Change of the Colonial Drive. But if you know the Colonial Drive location, whatever we put up there, it's not people seeing, it's, it's a lot of brush around it, so whether it's 150-foot or 100-foot, um, it's, it won't, it won't be, the tank is more see, more visible than the tower would be at that point.
Oh, so it's only two towers and those were potential locations?
No, so two, so there are two towers that we have in our, our project, the, the locations are, um, uh, Talon Hall or Darapon, that parking area like I showed you.
Yeah.
And then behind Old Town Hall, those are the two, those are the two locations that we've already slated to do it. As I said at the top of the, top of the site locations, we were swat, we were given a curveball today by Penachuck, um, due to the construction of the, of the tank and not being able to attach strictly to it. So we may be forced to put a small tower up there to house our antenna gear up there.
Okay, I understand now.
Every other structure is existing today.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else?
I have a question, uh, on this, John. Down there, uh, the Tabernacle Church, the tower there, do we have assessibilities at that one?
No, uh, so, uh, when we, when that was granted to happen, uh, we were gonna give rights to it, but we never stepped up and took any of the space, and now it's full. So it's not available.
It's guys fault, I agree.
Yeah, and, and the other side of it too, um, when we originally agreed to the tank, uh, one of the provisions was that we would get access to the tank for this type of installation. Unfortunately, I guess we didn't follow through and let the, let Penachuck know what we wanted to do, and so they didn't accommodate for something to be attached to the tank. We can use the property, that's not gonna be a problem, it's just, we didn't, again, I didn't know that until recently myself, so we're working through that.
Tank was in design for structure.
Yeah, the Tabernacle Site would have been ideal, that was originally what was proposed, where we allowed it to, we.
Correct.
Proposal, but we never filled the tower up with our gear, so it's been taken up by somebody else.
Okay.
Anybody else? I, I would just agree with, um, with Kate's comment, Joan, um, as long as, you know, try and keep the, keep it within the, like, the master plan, the tenor of the town, um, sort of the aesthetics. And I'm sure that, you know, the town will hold that in mind. You know, just keep that in mind.
Yeah, it's important to note that this is a safety tower, it's not a cell tower. What'll be on there will be no more than one or two antennas. And what you see, what you see in this picture represented is the best I can. The only difference may be there may be one small antenna off the side, that's it. Otherwise, it should be just, it should like this.
Well, thank you very much for, um, providing the information. The board appreciates it, and, um, letting us have a little bit of input into this.
Very welcome.
Go forward.
If you wanna be screen, if you wanna be sharing your screen, you gotta have the tape back.
All right, let me see if I can do that.
Um, so, uh, the next item on the agenda, uh, thank you, Joan, for, uh, for the representation, if I already.
Uh, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Um, next item on the agenda, discussing, uh, zone restrictions 575.7, open space requirements and 575.8, control and management of common and open space land, and I guess I'll turn to Jay on the screen.
I, I, I think we've, um, you know, and Joan can probably, uh, comment on this also, but I think as a result of our, you know, we recently had a open space development. And in going through some of the requirements, that, um, or your conservation development, really kind of pointed out that there are some changes in the existing ordinance, uh, in terms of language, particularly those, uh, focusing, as you can see here, um, around, um, designated open space and public access, so I, I'm just gonna read from the ordinance if I may. Um, this is, uh, section 575, uh, H, uh, B, where it notes that designated open space shall be open to the public and permanently protected by a conservation easement. Uh, and then there's some additional requirements that come after that. We also use the term, if you'll notice, in 575.8A, we use the terms common land, we use the terms green space, and we also use the terms conservation land throughout the ordinance, I think there's some, uh, ambiguity and confusion as to what these different designations mean. Um, there's also, I, I think, a, a lack of clarity around what we mean by public access and what our intent is under the ordinance. Uh, different portions of the ordinance, uh, seem to suggest different types of designated open space or open space that, um, is, is necessary. I, I'm seeing that there might be some, um, i- internet issues, can people hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, yep.
Okay. I see somebody else's computer, uh, so, and there are, I think, some areas that are potentially contradictory. Um, you know, we have language in here on, uh, what use restrictions exist, and, um, we'll say, you know, conservation easement, easement may be ordered to permit or restrict public access to allow or disallow recreation uses, as an example. We also have, one of the objectives of the ordinance is to, uh, preserve agricultural land. So typically, uh, if you have agricultural land, you have fields, you have pasture, you typically don't allow at least unfettered public access, uh, to those areas that would seem to be in conflict with maintaining farming typically. Um, so I, you know, I think based on a review of the ordinance, I, I, I think that, um, we may wanna consider some amendments to achieve some greater clarity around exactly what it is we want in terms of what we call, you know, the, uh, designated open space, uh, how that might differ from other types of open space, green space, common land, et cetera, on the plan, and, um, what we want or don't want, uh, in, in terms of public access. So that's, that's kind of a broad, um, overview. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that, uh, or Joan, you have any comments that, that you wanna add? Uh, but I, but I, I think it really warrants, uh, a, a bit of a deeper dive and, and some real thought around what we, what we're, what our goals really are.
Well, the question came up when we received the easements for 124 Hillcrest, um, there are some issues going on with that one. And like Jay says, it's ambiguity in the ordinance.
So you, I, I think if the, if the board has an interest in diving into this, uh, you know, issue a little bit more deeply, um, you know, I, I'd be happy to maybe suggest some thoughts. Um, I, I think it's probably a, a work session, uh, type of item, um, but I, I'd be certainly happy to point out some areas where I think we need some clarification for language and maybe make some suggestions, but I, you know, I, I think it's, some of it's technical, but a lot of this is, really comes down to a policy question of, um, what kind of open space, you know, do we really wanna see? And, um, we don't really have minimums in terms of what can be in what category. Uh, I will say I've seen a lot of different open space ordinances, in some cases, it's most, it's more typical for, uh, the land to be privately held as common land, uh, sometimes though there is public access. Uh, if I had to get, if I had to, you know, I, I guess I, I, I'd probably jump ahead to what I think makes sense is, I, I, I think it's important for the board to have some degree of flexibility and discretion in, um, deciding how or, or determining how, um, open space ought to be used, there are certainly cases where I think, um, public use of land, recreation fields, playgrounds, um, you know, public trails are, are really desirable and, um, you know, there are, where I think, you know, re- requirements related to, related to those make sense. There may be other cases, again, I'll use the example of, you know, preserving an agricultural field where maybe you don't want trails cutting through it, you don't want, uh, you know, unrestricted public access. And, um, there may be also be, uh, forest areas or wetland areas where some type of public access in, you know, consistent with a proper management plan, um, you know, would be prudent. Uh, so I guess it's a, it's a long way of, of saying, I, I think we wanna build discretion into the ordinance and maybe have some clarity around where certain types of measures are most appropriate. Um, again, happy to take a stab at, you know, that if, if that's of interest.
Okay. Um. Certainly, I think, I, you know, I mean, the board's feeling, do you think this would be something that you might wanna tackle in a workshop? Um, down the road? You don't know what.
This is, this is Kate, I, I remember, you know, especially that, that Hillcrest subdivision, it felt like the majority of our kind of like circular arguments were because not everyone understood exactly what the regulations were saying. And I know I had a lot of trouble understanding it because of all those terms being thrown around, like what's open space, what's common land? What's green space? Like, is it, are they supposed to build a, a park in the middle of the subdivision? Like, what, uh, it, it took longer than most, uh, plan reviews, I felt, because we were having such trouble understanding that, and maybe, I mean, I know some of you are lawyers, so maybe you guys didn't have as much trouble understanding it. Um, but, uh, as somebody who doesn't normally read, you know, some things, it was a lot denser than I'm used to, at least even in our regulations, they seem to be pretty understandable to read through, but that whole section was a bear, I thought. So I'm glad you brought that up, Jay.
Uh, this is Kim, I agree, I think, um, our, our regulations declare on like setback feet and, you know, percentages can be wetland or not wetland. And, but it's in a lot of different areas, so I think that was some confusion. Um, I guess, when we get, when, when should we reach out to the conservation committee, might be, a commission might be good to know in certain situations, maybe it's just not our decision, we need to also involve them. And I guess I'm confused on, if the, if the land was, um, gonna be deemed open space, who actually owns it, is the person who owned the land who came in front of us? Or is it, is it given to the town to do what they want, I think there's different scenarios that we really have to understand. Because based who owns it is what can happen with the land, so. I, I'm up for some clarity in a, in a, um, work session if that would solidify these rules a little more, cause it leaves a lot of legal room for planning boards and lawyers to craft what they want. So that's what, that's the reason I would like to have some more insight into these regulations.
Anybody? Um, yeah, I think this, you know, certainly something that we can, um, have for a discussion. Um. Do, do we know, Joan, what the, um, next meeting is gonna be? In terms of site plans or if there's anything coming forward or?
Um, I do have a sign application from the lobster boat, they're seeking a bearing, I don't know if they have received that yet. And, um, 7-Eleven making some changes, but they have not been an application yet on their sign. That's about all I have. You need to decide when the next meeting would be also.
Yeah, so I think maybe we could put this on the agenda for perhaps, um, the meeting, I mean, I, I don't know what, how, full next meet, the, if we do do a next meeting, um, in, uh, June, if maybe we devote some time to this subject area, maybe give Jay an opportunity to do some, um, deep dive into this and provide us with information, and then we can have a discussion at the next meeting. Does that seem reasonable to everybody or?
Yep, yes, that sounds good.
Okay.
I concur.
Okay. Um, James Curtis, do you have any other input, um, that you'd like to share or?
Uh, no, it sounds fine, sounds like a good idea, we should do it.
Yep, sounds good. All right, so maybe that's what we'll do for next, for the meeting. We'll devote a little time to this. And Jay, maybe you can put together something for the meeting. Or, you know, have something, provide us with documents or whatever, or, you know, if you find anything to help.
I'd be happy to.
Mike, what date are you looking at then?
So the next meeting would be probably the beginning of June.
Yeah, ordinarily, we'd be looking at the second or the 16th.
Okay, yeah, right, so would we do the second then? Would that do enough time to put something together? I don't wanna... Or do you want to shoot for the 16th?
I, I could, I could make either, I could make either work.
If we went with the 16th, you might hopefully be able to get into Town Hall. They're having a meeting tomorrow about opening up Town Hall and I specifically said to them, I need to know what we're planning on meetings, so that discussion will happen tomorrow, maybe by the 16th we could meet in person somehow.
Do a workshop then. All right. So why don't we tentatively plan for the 16th to do that? If that works with everybody. And if the next meeting on the second, we'll, you know, just clarify if that's gonna work. We'll go from there. So if that works with you.
Yes.
My apologies, my phone was dying, so I had to charge it.
Did you say you would meet the second?
We're gonna meet, I think we're gonna meet the second. Is there anything on the agenda for the second?
Probably two signs.
Just the two signs, right?
Well, just the one sign, go.
Just the one sign and. Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll shoot for the 16th.
Excuse me, we're not gonna meet the second?
Ah, yes, we're gonna meet the second, we have an application on the second. It's a sign, application, I understand.
And Jay said he'd be all right with the second to give us some, some stuff to work with, correct?
We can do this, why don't we do this then? Why don't we have something on the second, maybe Jay can provide some sort of an overview on this, doing a deep dive? And then we can plan on the second to what we want to do on the 16th if we decide to move forward with a workshop.
That's a good idea, give, give us more insight of what you're referring to here, with the confusion of the wording.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so we'll do that, okay, and we'll have, yeah, you can provide us with information for the second and we'll, we'll have a discussion in a second.
Yes.
Any other issues on this topic? Move on to committee reports, are there any reports from any committees? Kim, do you have anything from NRPC, I know it's.
Hi, yes, Jay, Jay, is it all right to go over what we discussed at NRPC at the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Um, there were two items that were discussed. NRPC had to make some amendments to their bylaws. Mostly it was vocabulary and catching up to current date events and also putting in wording about the Metropolitan Planning Organization Committee into the bylaws. I can get into more of that if you'd like, but at a higher level, the second item was NRPC is proposing to create a National Regional Planning Commission Foundation, which would be a what, nonprofit 503(c) company? They want to establish a nonprofit to receive funding from private foundation and individuals to want to give to a nonprofit organization, which will help for the purpose of benefiting NRPC, that's where the money would go towards. Pretty much wrap it up on what we were discussing.
Yes.
I, I think the other thing was, I'm not sure of the current census of this town, we're over 10,000 people at this point, I think. But the next federal census, whenever, whenever that comes out, if we are over 10,000 people, on the latest published census, when it comes out, we will be allowed to have another commissioner for Litchfield to bring us up to three. So it's something we need to look at. If we want more representation in NRPC. Let's see, the Heritage Commission has not met since the virus started, so we, I don't have any time. If we are gonna meet again, it'd be June 9th, but I haven't heard if we're gonna actually meet then or not. And that's all I have.
Okay. Conservation Commission, I don't think we've had a meeting in a while. I think we're planning on having one and may, Joan, correct me if I'm wrong, are we planning to do a virtual meeting or something or? At some point, I don't know.
We hope to have a meeting in June.
June, okay, all right. The Lower Merrimack Local Advisory Committee, which I sit on, they believe they're gonna be having some sort of a virtual meeting coming up on a project in Hudson. I haven't gotten all the details on that yet, so we're still waiting to hear. I think the plan we were submitted. And I think that's it on my part. Anybody have anything else? Kevin, do you have anything for the town?
No, I like a virtual shutdown. There's not much, things are gonna, we're, there's a meeting tomorrow with staff regarding the use of the town hall, see if we can open it up a little bit more. The governor's is still part of that, okay? Because of, you know, the six-foot clarises and all that. But we're looking at how we can do, do that with the town hall, there's, there's me a staff meeting and try to get everyone involved, not just a few, you know? Because people are afraid of, of certain things that people are not. You can see that no matter where you go today. Okay, go to Wally World, woo, okay? So guys, I'm clear, the town's been quiet.
Oh, and there's one thing I forgot to add, the Capital Improvement Committee did meet a week ago discussing the, the police station. We had a meeting with the Chief of Police about a proposed new station in Litchfield. There was discussion about whether it's going to be connected to the fire department or not. It sounded as though it would be a separate building, from my understanding. I mean, the, the price that came in, probably about $9 million. There's a lot of issues with states and the police department, the chief had a lot of concerns, especially about things like, you know, having a place to store evidence was a big thing. There's a lot, there's a big storage issue, an issue with, you know, people meeting or having, using a, like a, basically the lunchroom for other things. They don't have a lot of space to, to actually do a lot of stuff, but they have to use certain areas of the, the building. So there were a lot of different issues like that about the infrastructure and the concerns of costs and everything. I just wanted to give the, bring the board up to date that we, I believe the school is gonna be coming in in June to give a presentation, but the Capital Improvement Committee is working on meeting with different department heads, meeting with the different Conservation Commission and then the Reck Commission and so forth at the school to try to put together some sort of a proposal. So I just think I figured I'd give you, keep you up to date on that. And I, like I said, I think our next meeting is gonna be in June, but maybe we can have more discussion on that if anybody has any questions. With that, I will turn, unless anybody has anything else, I will turn to the meeting minutes, March 3rd, 2020, for a planning board. Does anybody have any questions about the minutes? Did they see anything, any changes they would like to add? I know it's been a while, so. I didn't really see anything glaring, but sometimes I can miss it. If everything, I mean, if you feel that it looks good, unless there's any amendments, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes in March 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. From, what was it, when was it, March what?
March 3rd.
March 3rd.
That's when we, was the last time we met in person. I know it's been a while, folks.
Been a while.
Yeah, it has. Okay, so I have a motion to approve the minutes, do I have a second?
No second, no, I can't, sorry.
Okay, do I have another second?
Let's look at the other meeting.
This is Kate, I have a second.
Okay, I have a second. Do I have discussion? All right, roll call vote, all those members in favor, please signify, roll call by saying aye. Michael Proto, aye.
Kimberly Quinn, an aye.
Kevin Lynch abstain.
Yeah, Kate Stevens abstain.
James Buffetti abstain.
Okay.
Curtis Hampton abstain.
If I was there, it's been so long.
No, I believe, actually no, 2-0-4?
So they're approved.
Yeah, they're approved.
Barely.
All righty. Any other business this evening? Jay, do you have anything else that you'd like to add this evening?
Only that the site plans for that Hudson project did come in and it is the fattest set of plans I have ever seen, so.
Is that the one by the highway?
Yes.
With the Starbucks and all that?
It's the, it's the logistics center, it's enormous.
Okay.
It's like a golf course, right?
Right, that's right.
Huge.
Huge.
Chris, do you need some bug spray?
Oh, I'm actually no bugs at all, just enjoying the.
Okay, guy.
Joan, do you have, do you have anything you would like to add?
Man.
I'm also.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion, if no one has any objections, to adjourn, adjourn the meeting.
They're moved.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second, Jim.
Discussion, all those signified by saying aye, roll call, Mike Proto, aye?
Kimberly Quinn, an aye.
Kate Stevens, aye.
James Buffetti, aye.
Kevin Lynch, aye.
Curtis Hampton, aye.
Okay, no, no opposition, no abstentions. All right, motion passed, 6-0-0, that was a lot easier. Okay, our next meeting will be the beginning of June 2nd, at 7:00 PM in Town Hall. Thank you everybody for bearing with me this evening on this virtual experience. I'm sure it's been enlightening to you as well. And hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll meet again soon in Town Hall. Bye, Joe, man. Really? I'm gonna basically say I'm signing off, folks, so have a good evening, everyone be well, be safe.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.